And take our proposed budget and see where FinCom shows up, if this is our proposed budget, and how we all feel about that.
I gotta give it some thought.
And I'm open to suggestions.
Like I said, my initial thought is, I don't like any of it.
I hated running the numbers myself. I mean, I wish that I could take my Comcast budget and plug those numbers in here and we'd be fine, but it doesn't work that way.
They could just plug some of their money in.
Sure.
I don't know that I record that properly.
A donation.
Oh, Damien, okay.
I didn't say for him to sort of just take it. You made an assumption, Jean.
Jean, I may be here too long, but, and I like this, this has been, I think it added a nice foundation to the budget discussion, but when will we get your reports? Your spreadsheets?
I think the decisions have to be made at the board level before we...
By the, yeah, by the, though you mean the munis prints up?
No, the six-page.
The six-page budget document that shows where we are, were, and where we're going.
Yeah, because we're used to looking at those, that's why you're asking right now.
Yeah, a little bit.
I mean, I like the modeling, but I think...
This is great, again.
I think it's an exercise that has, we have to do this. You know, I appreciate you coming up with this model, Matt. But again, it sort of doesn't make our decision-making any easier, just makes it easier to sort of manipulate and play with it.
I'm open to suggestion, if people can, if you can come up with other ways to come to the end number that I sat at.
Yeah.
And this wasn't anything taken lightly, I mean, this was ours.
Yeah, I'm not suggesting that it was, Kevin, I think, I appreciate you spending the time to do this. Again, we're not faced with any easy answers.
And I apologize to Matt for the 23 million phone calls that probably drove you crazy about it, but I needed to fully understand and digest it first, and then really understand what the impacts and, I don't know, there's a ripple effect, I guess is the easiest way to explain it, it's like throwing a rock in a pond, is, this is gonna have waves, it's gonna go all the way through the community in one way, shape, or form or another, and none of these were easy choices. You know, yeah, it sounds simple, the, well, if I click this lever on the spreadsheet, this happens, but, you know, at the end of the day, you know, these are people that you're impacting.
Not only people, you're impacting the services to the community.
And that's my whole point.
Yeah.
Is that people need to make those kinds of decisions in terms of what they're willing to live with.
I would say they made those decisions.
I think they do, but, you know, we've got a town meeting coming up, there are more decisions to be made.
I think that they...
I think ultimately, you know?
I think that they did make decisions, but I don't think they were as well-informed decisions as they could have been. Like, a lot of the stuff that floated around, like, I know that there was tons of people that made decisions on two and a half overrides based off of what they read on Facebook. And half of what was sitting on Facebook was inaccurate data, and it was foolhardy at best.
I think that's some of it, Kevin. I think a lot of people make decisions based on their willingness or inability to pay more in taxes. It comes down to the dollar.
It's, I agree, but I mean, it's also, like, the ballot question, when we, we had to go out and replace two pieces of equipment that we desperately needed to replace, the pumper rescue truck and the highway truck, which was the culver cleaner. And to actually have people say, well, because of the way that they wrote the ballot, I didn't understand what it meant. Yes means you approve, no means you don't. I mean, I think I'd prefer the level of candor from the community at large if they just come forward and say, I just don't feel like paying more money in taxes, than to come up with...
We heard some of that at town meeting over the last several years.
We heard some of it, but, like I said, my gut just tells me that there was a large part of it to where that there's a popular misconception that runs through town, that everybody that works for a municipality is grossly overpaid, and they're not. And they seem to think that there's a lot of, like, foolish spending that's taking place in town, but there isn't, and nobody actually sits down and pulls these reports out and looks at them. And when we, as elected officials, sit in front of our community and explain to them, we can't go at this burn rate anymore, I mean, I get frustrated, you know, to sit back and have people, like, shoot it down based off of things that are completely inaccurate data. And now we're looking at a point where I'm taking services away from our community, I'm telling people they aren't gonna get a cost of living adjustment, and I still can't balance a budget in 2020.
And again, I think we, we need to do a better job of making people understand, I think, you know, a lot of what I heard last time with the two and a half override we were trying to pass, is the opposition kept saying it was a spending problem. You know, if we stopped wasting money and stopped spending foolishly, we wouldn't need the extra two and a half they were asking for.
A piece of this is, we've been saying this for a while, I think this year it actually becomes real, intangible, the cuts.
I agree.
Right?
And I mean, it's...
So that, I don't know if that gives us credibility at that point, that we were serious with these numbers?
It's...
I don't wanna find out, but I think I'm gonna.
Well, there's no way around it. I mean, cuts are gonna happen, and there's gonna be pain felt, and it's gonna leave a large gaping hole in the community. And I'm not gonna find any, any form of solace in being like, told yourself.
Yeah, it's gonna hurt.
I'm hoping that maybe Hal will come in and have lots of answers the next time he...
He's currently toying around with the spreadsheet, he's got the answers.
Hal's doing some kind of mojo right now, he'll figure it all out.
Capital improvement projects.
There's no capital in this budget at all, is there?
Well, nothing here.
Yeah.
Right? So, the notion would be, your primary financing mechanism for capital would be free cash, but you have to generate that free cash in order to have capital improvement activity. I'm still getting some spreadsheets in from departments. The last time I added up the sum total was over seventeen and a half million in needs. If you take buildings out, so a police station, a library, and a DPW bond, or a highway bond, you're still at five, six million. So if you fund four hundred, five hundred thousand a year, it's gonna take you twelve years to replace equipment that needs to be replaced within three... So that's, that becomes the hidden loss, is that terrible kicking the can down the road, you just don't perceive it. A layperson who's never driven a dump truck before doesn't know what they're looking at when they come up behind a sander that has a little bit of body rot at the bottom of the, of the bed, right? They don't, they don't realize that that's really not gonna last a whole heck of a lot longer, and most people are shocked to find what a dump truck costs. I didn't know, and I worked on a farm where we had them all the time, I always bought them used, but the new stuff is a hundred and seventy-five thousand, a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. And when you buy used, you buy somebody else's problems, the only reason why municipalities profit with that equipment is because it doesn't work. There's something fundamentally wrong with it. So, you know, basic rules of thumb, an ambulance is a quarter of a million bucks, police cruiser's forty-five, forty, forty-two.
The bottom.
Engine pumpers are five hundred, five hundred and seventy-five thousand, depending what you put on it. You bought a quint on a grant, which, you know, if you wanna replace that thing, that's another eight hundred, nine hundred thousand dollar piece of equipment. So, all of that stuff is starting to come due, and can't be ignored, or the bottom will fall right out of services. And again, I hate to use the same example, I feel like constantly kicking the dead horse, but it was two snowstorms ago with a town where I used to work, they have nine plows on the road doing eight routes, eight of them broke down. So what it, it took people hours to drive ten, twelve miles to their homes, because nothing was touched, and there was almost a foot of snow on the ground. It's not Chicken Little to say that that's something that can happen, it happens all around us. I mean, Fall River's another great example of a community that never wanted to put away for those things, then it hit them all at once, and they end up doing all kinds of crazy debt exclusions and other things, and the tax rate goes through the roof, and everybody says, what the heck happened? Well, you neglected it for so long that that's what happened. And the only way to explain it to people is to talk about your own house, right? If you don't have the burner cleaned, and you have the same oil tank you've had in your house for forty years, and the sludge is building up in the bottom and making its way in, and you're not cleaning the nozzles, sooner or later, you're not gonna have heat. Now, how many times do you see this? So, can't fix the burner, so I'll go get myself a Honda generator and some space heaters, right? Plug everything in, and then the generator lights on fire. It's just, it's this constant fall down, but if you just cleaned the burner every year on a service plan, you wouldn't face that, that problem. And unfortunately, when you focus only on the operating budget, and you don't think about the ramifications on capital, that's what happens, it starts to catch up with you. This is an extremely capital-intensive operation, and you might get by with seven full-time firefighters working their shifts. But you need the engines, and you need two ambulances, because it's not that unusual for them both to be needed. You need to have the requisite number of cruisers. So, it really is a lot of equipment for a small town, but it's what you're barging for when you say you're gonna provide a certain level of service. And when you don't have a lot of public water, you gotta have a tanker, or two, that can make it out, and then mutual aid's gonna have to help, and even then, you know, everybody's helping each other, it takes, really takes four tankers to put out a fire in a, in a place where there's no public water supply. So if you have two, and you're relying on two to come from neighboring communities, that's fair, that's a fair bargain. So I think that's where we are, we're at probably five or six million dollars' worth of just really pressing needs. Another thing is, this building is a really big part of the capital request, there are just so many things in this building that are weird, right? There's pipes going, we don't know where they, what they connect to, until one day the heat's off, right? And all of a sudden, well, somebody comes in and tries to follow the pipe, and they can't figure out where it goes. The main roof of the building is very old, and we've had a leak up there, and we have an insurance claim, but it's gonna be satisfied, but it's just for a spot repair, it's not for the whole thing. But it's a former school building, it's full of infrastructure, and then our technical requirements in terms of cabling, and a server room with proper air conditioning and proper power backup, all of those things need to be tended to, or, again, you're just interrupting the ability of the town to provide services in a quality way. I worry that our network isn't robust enough to handle what we put out over it. I think one reason why we have so much trouble with munis is that we have Cat 3 wire in the building, and we've got this massive software program blasting data out over these tiny little pipes that are just straining with all the data packets.
Cat 3's not designed for IP traffic.
No, and that's what it's carrying, and it happens to be all the town's financial information.
You should be running Cat 6.
Yeah. And we're working on that project, but I think that's the point, right, is that every single system in this building is at the verge of really needing to be overhauled. And you had a boiler fire, you have a new boiler, the heat's working better, the windows are sealing it in, there's progress being made, but it can't stop. Just the, my favorite pet peeve in the building right now is the gym doors. You might as well just leave them open, because the gaps on the bottom, you know, you, a pretty good-sized critter could make it through some of the gaps under the doors and around the edges. It's time to do some of those projects. Sorry to wax poetic, but capital is what always gets hurt.
If we could have that list...
Yeah, so that list is ready to go. We've gotta meet as a committee, because we just keep getting messed up with the weather and quorums and everything else, but I've got that. It's in the spreadsheet already, it's all sorted.
Go over that on our next meeting, I guess.
Yeah, and see if we can't shop around and get some help on, on that.
Well, that's the good news, is usually when you look for help, that's where people are willing to say, well, we'll help you buy a truck. For some reason, it's easier for people to do that.
Well, it's not a one-time plug.
Yeah.
Why don't we keep the snot out of this one tonight? So, and I do know, we have some folks in the library.
We can't hear anything, you're saying, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm mumbling, I'm sorry. So, I did notice you guys, do you have any comments, concerns, questions? I know the standard of, please don't close the library, I understand that one. But any ideas, suggestions?
I'd love to speak for just a moment.
Sure.
I'm from Battery, thirty-sixth and Rose Street. I'm also a library trustee. You heard all the arguments that I would make last week, I think, from all the people that were here, and there's nothing really I can add to that, but a living community, like a living body, needs to have arms and legs, and ears and eyes, but it also needs a heart and a soul. And I think that's what the library is, it's sort of the heart and the soul of the community. And you've made a unilateral decision just to cut it out. And I hear you say that the townspeople should make that choice, but you're making that choice for them right now. And I'd like to hear from you some small turnips, like, you're putting it on us, but how, how, how can people really, the people in the town make, make the decision? When you stripped it from the budget?
Well, actually, can I just, we haven't really made any decisions any, about the library at this point in time. It's on the table, but we haven't stripped anything from the budget at this point. What we're doing now is going over scenarios of what if we did this, what if we did that, based with the million-dollar deficit that we have to reduce to balance the budget. But we haven't, as a group, made any decisions, and any decisions we make are recommendations to town meeting. And the town meeting will ultimately decide whether they like our recommendations or not.
But town meeting will also have to budget, balance that budget, right? That's the other piece to this. It's one thing to come up and say, no, I don't like the direction you're going here, change that, but in the next breath, there has to be a, here's how we're going to tweak your budget.
Let me expand, if you don't mind, on what Tim said. We have to balance the budget, town meeting has to balance the budget, those numbers have to match. We try very hard to take cuts that hurt the least amount of people and do the least amount of damage to the community. Nobody here wants to close the library, or, to be frank, do anything else that we're talking about tonight. Town meeting has ratification over anything we recommend. We haven't recommended anything, we're just basically opening our own discussion now. If we were to recommend anything, town meeting has the ability to override us, but they also have the same duty we do, that budget has to balance. So if we don't wanna cut A, whatever A may be, the library or something else, we are going to have to make a corresponding cut B somewhere else to balance that budget. And when I talk about "we," I'm not talking about this board, I'm talking about the town as a whole, okay? We have to make those numbers match.
I understand you legally have to do that, I don't understand. So, one of the things I heard you say this week and last week as well, is of the town that it's hard to get information to people, people don't seem to have all the facts to make decisions, or to understand, really, what the things you're just talking about, the difficulty, and that the budget has to be balanced. I, I run a publication that comes to Douglas once a month, and I would be more than happy to publish a report from Matt, from the town administrator, from Kevin Morse, the Board of Selectment Chairman, from any of you, and I'll give you as much space as you want to lay out to the people in this town what the ramifications are of the decisions that you're making. So, my next issue will be coming out second week in April, just had it on last week, called the Blackstone Valley Express. And I'll work with your, with your input, with your, if you can work with my deadlines, and I'm happy to help edit, write, whatever makes it easier for all of you, so that we can, in fact, get all this information out to the public. And that's a real, it's a real contribution I can make my time to try and keep the library as the heart and soul of this community.
It's a very generous offer, thank you.
It's much appreciated, thank you.
Thank you.
Still waiting for them to talk more.
I, I think we've exhausted our conversations for this evening.
So, I only got one more, one more comment. Any permanent combination of two hundred thousand dollars takes the place of the library in this conversation. And if it makes the entire conversation value-neutral, I can give you the options to pull those levers, but there, if you think closing the library's unpleasant, everything else is equally unpleasant. The senior center is eighty-six thousand dollars, so that doesn't get you even halfway to your target. Going back to having a call ambulance service on the overnight shift is gonna save you maybe two heads, and assume they take a family plan, it's a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So you might be getting close, but are those levers that you even wanna consider? Like I said, to be value-neutral, we could put them here, but I think one exercise that everyone should, should, really should do, is take this twelve million, three hundred thousand dollars on the municipal side of the equation, take out everything that you really don't control. You don't control the employment level at the school department, so all the health insurance costs that are driven by school department employment come out. You have to pay your debt, so debt comes out. The pension bill will be due if nobody works here. There were promises made by boards of selectmen and town meetings in all the communities in Worcester County back into the sixties, and they didn't fund them, and our generation is left to pick up the tab. And as angry as that makes me, it's just a reality, we're gonna have to pay for it all. So that, what is the nine hundred some-odd thousand dollars in the budget, that will always be there, it's not gonna go away. My point here is that it's not really trying to find two hundred thousand out of twelve million. You end up finding, trying to find really closer to four hundred thousand, because remember, we're shorting the schools two hundred, trying to find four hundred thousand out of about six million. That's not a ten percent across-the-board cut, or it is, but it's, it's, you can't do it by only getting twenty-five percent of a newspaper subscription, or printing everything on a quarter of a page of paper in the copy. Our expenses just don't work that way. There aren't, if you don't completely cut off individual services or hold departments, you're just gonna reduce everybody to the point where they can't operate, and you might as well not have anybody. And I think that's the point. That's why it's so challenging to consider other options in the numbers when you really start to pare it down. The savings we hope to realize are actually, you know, the word draconian comes to mind because that's what it is, it's massive cuts to a very small number, and that is the analytical framework we're in if we assume that the community will not support an override. So like I say, I can, this thing is infinitely flexible, we can do anything we want, we can plug them into Jean's spreadsheets and get the same kind of analysis that's more familiar to you, but that's really what it comes down to, is that, every single last slice is, all the frosting's off the cake, there's nothing left now.
And that's what makes this so painful, it's, you know, there's nothing, any lever you pull is one that you don't wanna pull.
And I guess to address the people that, that you receive calls from, when they said we've made it work, you just point to those two numbers, school choice out, VVT, and you say, we didn't make it work.
Right.
Because those numbers went up.
They kept leading.
If we made it work, those numbers would've stayed low. So, they can't say that.
Right. Took a second, but you're right.
They can't, I mean, and the other thing to look at is the capital. And, you know, we've made that comment, too. We, we've addressed the operation, we kinda trimmed around the edges, but the capital kept growing. We tried to put an extraordinary maintenance account on there to address some of the things that Matt alluded to tonight. So we haven't made it work.
I don't think we're close.
And it's the silent people, you know, we don't know that they're school choiceing out, they don't tell us, they don't say, hey, I'm going out, they just do it, it's like a silent leave. We're just left with the bill.
Okay. So, to be clear, what I'm taking home is a cut in the library and a reduction to the school from this year's funding of two hundred thousand.
I, to go back to my more neutral statement, you're looking for four hundred thousand dollars. The model shows it right now in the schools and the library.
Yeah.
It could easily be modeled to show something else, but would those things be operationally sustainable? This is a completely different question.
So it's not just cuts, it's cuts that we can still manage to function somehow?
It's a daunting thing, I, whether we made it work or not, I think, I agree with you, it isn't working, but I don't know if anyone could make these numbers work, given the projections that we've seen since twelve, anyway, even before then.
We couldn't level service and make the numbers work.
Yeah.
There's no way.
Time caught up with us.
Well, it's, it's a revenue problem, we reduced from the state since 2008, we couldn't, couldn't continue to support it without an override.
And that's an important point, it's a revenue problem.
It is a revenue problem.
Yeah, and that's what we all need to remember over and over, it's a revenue problem.
And, and Tim, I hope you do go see the governor, because I'm just as irritated with the school, the state on land as, as you are.
We're gonna keep Jean out of this meeting? I don't know.
She may be very useful at that meeting, I'm not sure.
They bought more land and they're giving us less.
That's less money.
Do you see a problem here?
Big problem.
This is whoops.
Right.
Anything else from the audience?
I would guess, can I just ask a philosophical question?
Sure. If you're willing to get a philosophical answer.
Well, several.
Well, I mean, it, it's a revenue problem. We all know it's a revenue problem, and, you know, it, I understand that there's this need to be politic and to, you know, not, to, to try to remain neutral, but, I mean, you don't have any other choices here. I'm not gonna sit here and tell you that you can fund the library with, you know, the revenues next year, because you can't. So why don't y'all just put an override on the ballot every year? Every year it doesn't pass, take away a service, until they do.
I mean, essentially, that's kind of what we've done. I've been on the board for three years, Justin, and during that time, there have been two overrides proposed, and the people spoke loud and clear by multiples and said they weren't interested, they don't wanna pay taxes. I pay great heed to what Mr. Hughes says, that a lot of people, I believe, and I mean, don't mean this in any negative way, they make the same observations that Mike talked about. They drive home, the roads are plowed, the streetlights are on, if they call 911, the police or the ambulance of fire show up. They don't see the problem. We see it because we're all involved in town government, and we've been able to predict it's coming, and we've been predicting it for the whole three years that I've been here. And I think now D-Day, for want of a better term, is here. Regardless of the fact that we've, I think, you know, certainly last year with the library, we made it very clear what would happen, it's here, and we could put an override on the ballot, but I think we've been told loud and clear that the answer to that is going to be no.
Well, I think people have been confused, because every year there's these, well, services are going to be cut, things might happen here, things might happen there. There's never just been a really strong ultimatum saying, you know, if this override doesn't pass this year, the library closes. If this override doesn't pass this year, you don't get ambulances anymore. I think that, I don't know, from, from the people I talk to, from a library perspective, because, you know, the, the patron base I deal with, we have three thousand, one hundred and some odd patrons who've been active for the last year, and, you know, they're primarily, you know, the homeschool parents, they're the seniors, they're young kids, they're the people on the lower end of the socioeconomic strata, who aren't really represented in all the discussions that revolve around schools, which is what most of the past, you know, it's where, the arena where most of the past discussions have taken place. And, you know, they, they're, they're like, you know, well, we've never, we've always been told the town needs money, but we've never seen a tangible impact. And, you know, I think I heard one of y'all say last year, you know, you lose credibility if, you know, people don't hurt when you say you need something, and they don't give it to you, but they still perceive that, that level of functionality, and most of the library patrons still do. So, I mean, I don't know, I, I, I'm a little confused as to why putting an override proposition on the ballot, whether y'all support it or not, isn't seen as an opportunity to, you know, say, you know, all right, pass this override, or your toy goes away.
Well, I think there's also a fundamental thing that a lot of people don't see, is that when you sit there at town meeting and talk about appropriating a two and a half override, in the event that it should ever happen to go, you'll see a lot of support, and people will stand up, because it's very difficult to have to turn around and look to your name.
to your neighbor and say, "There's no way in, there's no way in hell I'm paying more money in taxes." So, you stand up and agree for the appropriation, but when the ballot shows up, it's a personal thing, and you're standing in that booth, and that's where you see these overwhelming numbers of two and three and four to one, no. And then what also happens is, I don't know, I can't speak for the rest of the selectmen, but I've been approached by my former party affiliation, being asked, "Why are you even proposing an override?" So, you know, where are your constituents? Where the ones that got you elected? We, you signed your paperwork and you come to us and ask for more taxes. You're completely off-base. And I have had those conversations. So, I mean, I understand where you're at philosophically speaking, but, you know, realistically speaking, we're elected officials and most of us look to get re-elected at one point in time or another. And if we keep going every year after year after year and saying, "We need to raise taxes, we need to raise taxes," they're just going to find someone else to put in the seat that'll say, "No, we're not going to do that." It's, I mean, that's just the truth of the matter.
To that, I would say it takes a tremendous...
Why do you want a seat?
I don't know.
Good question.
That's, that's a heck of a philosophical question right there, even more than your prior one.
I guess, you know, that if, the way I'm seeing this going, either the library has a fight to fight this year, or we just need to start getting ready to put sheets over the shelves now and mitigate damage.
I would say that you, I mean, I like, I fight every fight. I'm, that's just how I am. I don't really lay down and take much...
But then out of override, though, there's no fight, because there's nowhere else for the money to come from.
I think you might be right.
Yeah.
Might I say too, that I, you know, I, I understand why a lot of people didn't vote for the override last time, but from my perspective, I voted in for millions of dollars of new schools and over, you know, over the past years, and they have beautiful buildings, and then they keep asking for more. I say, "Wait a minute, we've already given you millions and millions of dollars," you know? So, that's the sort of like the human reaction. Why do you need more money? Why can't you make two of what, you know, we've already given you? And, okay, just, just, just one, one view.
Uh, no, I mean, and I, I've heard it a lot. I mean, I've had a lot of people that have come up when we're trying to get an essential item, like a pumper rescue truck. Like, you need a pumper rescue truck. The one that we'd had was older than the firefighters that were driving it. And the town overwhelmingly said, "No, you're spending too much money on something for the fire department." I, I've had people argue with me about, "We don't need twenty-four-hour ambulance services." And yet, I had two people that were sitting in this room a few weeks ago that are here because we have them. So, there's a contingent of people that sit within this community that feel that any amount of money that's spent, you know, towards the town is just, it's frivolous and it's, you're wasting money or you're overspending. And you see outpourings, and I think a gentleman that was here when we'd had the original discussion on this, is that people all of a sudden are willing to support a two-and-a-half override when it affects their part of the world. But, you know, this was, look at what our school choice outnumbers are. They really could have benefited from a two-and-a-half override. We could have had some additional money in capital improvement and not been sitting here and having this exact conversation that we're having, that now, you know, this board has to sit there and propose taking a service away from the community, because people were looking at their little piece of the world and they didn't look at the big picture. So, unfortunately, we've got a big-picture problem now, and, and, and cuts need to happen, and I don't know where to go. You know, I just looked at it. I ran numbers off of a spreadsheet and had to look at it as a businessperson and make it as non-emotional as I could. You know, as a human being, do I want to cut anything? No. I'd love to be able to give the town all the services that it's asking for. Revenue-wise, economically speaking, I can't. And as much as I hate to say it, when people come up and say, "Well, hey, we don't have a library," or, "Hey, we don't have a senior center," hey, I told you this two-and-a-half years ago, we needed to do something, and the town overwhelmingly said no. And there's people sitting in this room that said no. Go ahead.
Um, I've heard that you guys aren't in favor of doing a menu-type of override.
I don't think we've discussed it.
Haven't discussed an a la carte or a menu.
Well, or, you know, and, and so, could the library be on something like that? So, you don't have a humongous override question, like over a million dollars or something like that, but you had the three-thousand dollars for the library and X amount for something else, and, you know, and then the people do decide, as you say, Mike, uh, small amount, what they want.
See, I, I, yeah, I, I, you know, we haven't discussed it. That's certainly something we would consider. But Ellie, two-hundred thousand dollars is only going to help us next fiscal year. That's it. It doesn't solve the problem.
Hopefully, you'll remember it too, that, gee, the library came through and funded, the people funded it. But, uh, we did do one in ninety-four, and, um, I think the only things that passed was police and libraries.
A menu?
A la carte menu?
Listen.
Yes, it was a, it's called a, a menu override. It's, you can look it up on the Department of Revenues website and, and it will come up there.
Oxford did one as well. There were four items and two of the four passed.
Was there's done that also?
I think we did, the town administrator, back in the day when, um, we did it, did not pass. You know, they, they just didn't want to fund the town administrator.
And they wouldn't fund my department either, so...
Right, exactly. So, they're, you, you can choose, but if, if, if we're one of the options, you know, that might be a way of finding the support from the town to decide what they want, you know?
Can you get us some information on that for next week's meeting? And we'll take a look at it.
Yeah, I think that's something we, we should discuss. I, I'm not adverse to considering...
Ninety-nine, what about annual calendar?
Well, I, to be candid, Ellie, nothing's off the table to look at. I'm, I'm open to any suggestion that people have, that we can prevent having to do this. And I cautioned in last week's meeting, is that an override this year gets you FY nineteen. FY twenty, that override money's now part of the levy, and I can't guarantee that it'll be dog-eared for the library, because school costs could go up exponentially or something. So, but, I mean, I'm willing to look at any and every opportunity that we have. Like I said, nobody here emotionally wants to close anything. Um, you know, I believe one gentleman said, "Do you guys really want to be the board that closes the library?" No.
No.
We absolutely don't, but we may have to be. I mean, it's not something that I like or I'm happy about, but we're elected to make difficult decisions, as much as we don't like them, and it's just the, the nature of the beast. And to answer your question, Justin, I ask myself every day why we want one of these seats, but somebody...
I don't want to be the director that ran his first library from the ground.
Somebody has to, you know what I mean?
Somebody has to run the library.
Not into the ground. Somebody has to step up and, and do something regarding local government and make difficult choices. I know my last election, I ran unopposed, as you did as well, Mr. Bonin, and that happens a lot too, because, you know, there's nobody really willing to hop up and throw their name in the hat and say that they want to try and do this for the modest stipend that they give us every year.
This is not fun.
No.
At all.
Are you kidding?
Justin, to answer the question another way, or another reason is just willy-nilly throwing an override question on the ballot and it fails, and it fails. Eventually, that has a negative effect on our bond rating, which at one point early on in my tenure, we were very concerned about. I think we're not going out the bond anytime soon, so maybe that's lessened a little bit, but I know we wanted to protect that as much as we could.
You will get a rating opinion if you go to refund anything.
Right. And if we're refunding the school debt next fall or next winter, depending on where the interest rates are, would, would it impact us?
Right. So, that's, you know, a thing for the board to think about. Another piece to that, and one thing in the two failed overrides that we've seen, is a tremendous ground game and operation that needs to take place, and that starts from within. Uh, the thirty people last week and the six here today, um, needs to be substantially higher, otherwise...
The telegram said we had fifty.